To make T-shirts for this quilting tribe, these people that are really into sewing and quilting. And so we made these shirts, and there's not really anybody else in this space who's creating a...
Don't you record this anymore? Well, didn't you notice it was one of the meetings I got in a little bit of trouble with my girlfriend? Especially watching on YouTube, and it's like, they're typing plants. And I said, "Oh, you know, they have to be careful with the plants." "There's no chance of weeds." She said, "You mentioned that."
Everything should work.
Yeah. No, no, no. Well, no. The last time, I forgot to turn it on. Wasn't it not working right? Well, it was. Oh, wow. Actually had a nice. Now I'm just getting makeup artist to get rid of the glare on my hair.
Brian, are you guys ready? You guys ready?
Let's do it.
Well, it's 5:30, and we will begin. We welcome you to our Provo City Planning Commission meeting. And we will begin with a prayer that will be offered by Fred Bandley, after which we will have a pledge, will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Jamin Rowan, and then we'll take a brief roll call. Mr. Bandley.
Our Heavenly Father, we pause as we begin this planning commission hearing this evening. We're grateful to be met, to discuss important things concerning the future of Provo. We're grateful to live in such a beautiful and peaceful place. On this Veterans Day, we are grateful for those men and women who have served and who currently serve in the branches of the armed forces in our nation. And we give thanks for them. We ask a blessing upon them as they serve and protect us and perpetuate our values and the freedoms that we enjoy. We pray this evening that we may have dialogue that is productive and that is respectful, that we may resolve to improve our city for the benefit of all. These blessings we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bandley, and thank you, Mr. Rowan. We'll begin with a roll call, starting on my left. Please state your name and whether you have any conflicts of interest on matters before the planning commission this evening.
Fred Bandley, no conflicts this evening.
Kermit McKinney, no conflicts.
Ross Flum, no conflicts.
Jamin Rowan, no conflicts.
Thank you, very much. And we just do wish to welcome all of you that are here tonight on this Veterans Day. And we would also like to welcome all of you from the members of the community and/or any local scout troops that may be with us tonight also. Thank you for your participation. Those items that are indicated on your agenda with a star, which includes all items one, two, three, two and three, do require public hearing and legislative action by the municipal council. So in this meeting, we will simply forward either a positive or negative recommendation to the municipal council for their, for their action. And we will begin with item number one, which is that Provo City Community Development requests review and recommendations of the Provo Downtown Streetscape Standards, also known as Sally sells seashells by the seashore. Austin Corey, will you please? I sure hope you got the Sally sells seashells by the seashore. While we're waiting, what troop are you gentlemen from? Are there a couple different troops?
We're from the same troops, but I am...
Seven fifty-seven?
Yeah, seven fifty-seven.
Seven fifty-seven? And which troop are you from, sir? Seven twenty-eight? Forty-eight. Well, thank you, gentlemen, very much for coming, and we hope this meeting is just a boot. Are we good? So, it's not recording. Go ahead. Austin, would you please present item number one for us?
Sure, so this item was actually on the last planning commission, if you recall. Continued it to make sure that you guys had enough individuals available to try and discuss it. But just to reiterate the basics of this, this is a design standard for just dealing with the streetscapes when it comes to the downtown districts. The downtown master plan, Vision 2030, are some of our long-range documents that specifically identify a need to really create a harmony within the downtown area and help to define some space. So presently in our coordinates, we have architectural design standards in the DT one and DT two zones. Have some other kind of regulatory design standards that exist, but nothing specifically address the streetscape and spatial standards as they relate to the environment and what we're talking about, things like that. So this, this standard is basically supplementary to the other design standards that all exist, but this one becomes regulatory in the effect of helping as development moves forward. Even the city, when city-initiated projects go forwards, so that we have a clear understanding and expectation of what kind of product can be expected for the streetscape. So that's the purpose of it, and I will any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Austin. And other questions for staff from members of the commission? While they continue to reread the document, I had, did you have a question?
Oh, you're welcome to go.
Austin, two questions. One, this is a set of standards, not guidelines, correct? That developers must follow when, if they were to develop within the DT one and DT two zones? As indicated, I mean, because I know that those zones are a little bit broader than what's marked or dotted in.
Right, so this would apply only to the scope that's defined in the front of the book, which actually beyond DT one and DT two, it covers some of the ITOD zones.
Right.
So it's regulatory only and not that, and it is standard. So it is the regulatory standard that in order to deviate from anything specified here, it would require a planning commission.
My second question was, in some of the instances, it talks about brushed concrete. You know, I know what that is, you know, for various areas of sidewalk and, you know, the distances for those. But in other areas, it mentioned the use of pavers and where, but it didn't clearly specify to me where I had to use brushed concrete versus where I could use pavers. And on the paver section, it said, you know, how, why the pavers had to be and how they had to be cut and that sort of thing. I'm assuming in the code, it will be more specific than, for some of those instances than what we're seeing here, is that correct?
Well, so one thing to understand about this is it's trying to identify basically amenities material selections without being too specific about exactly where it goes. That being said, there are statements in here that's the main pedestrian zone. If you look at the front part where it has...
Right.
It identifies those zones that fit in the public realm space. Some of those are referred to throughout this, and primarily your sidewalks fall in the pedestrian zone, which will be your brushed concrete, a standard thing. And you see, pavers are actually prohibited in those areas unless it's for the purposes of a very innovative design.
Okay.
The amenity and proper zones is where you run into those pavers.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rowan had a question.
Yeah, so I really like this a lot, Austin and team. I just had a couple of questions. We were actually talking about this in our meeting, our pre-meeting, in terms of, you know, the language at the, on the first page is about continuity and harmony. By creating standards for future development, this experience can be one of continuity and harmony that will unify downtown Provo while still providing for each property to be individually designed with a unique character. And then on page three, that under innovative design, Provo welcomes innovative and unique designs and encourages all design professionals and developers to express their individual talents throughout the process. However, it is also important to maintain integrity and compatibility among projects. I just, maybe it was, it was left, not necessarily vague, but like the tension between those two things was left unspecified for good reason. But I'm, I'm, I think I fall in line with what you seem to be suggesting, Austin, which is that it's good for, I think it's often to the benefit of communities when you allow design professionals, architects, others to come up with creative things and see what they can do. Is there anything that we can do? My only question or suggestion was, is there anything in the language of this that we can do to make sure that that's as clear as, as possible? I would like to see that as clear as possible. And I worry that perhaps some of the language might suggest that, well, innovative and design, as long as it's in harmony. And people's definition of harmony and continuity can be very different. Does that look like the redesigned bank on University Ave? What's it called? Central Bank, like, is that what continuity looks like? Or can continuity take more innovative, innovative shapes and sizes? I would love to see, I would love to see a range that goes, that goes beyond what the bank accomplished. Not that that's bad, but if that's all we get, if that's, if we get just that continuity and harmony, then that would be a shame to me. So my only, and I didn't, I didn't necessarily take the time to kind of write out what that clarification, that clarification might look like in a document like this. But, you know, something that might, that we might just emphasize a little bit more, I don't know.
Sure, you know, we can definitely take a look at that and address that and see if we can come up with something, perhaps even just work directly with you.
Yeah.
To see if we can't get that clarified in there.
Maybe it's just, maybe it's even just an introduction adding some of the language from the innovative design, right? Where you, you kind of start off, the document starts off with this, almost a heavy emphasis on the development, this experience can be one of continuity and harmony that will unify, you can, continuity, harmony, unify. And then you say, while it can be individually designed, but that feels like a kind of, almost a throwaway thought. Maybe there's just one more sentence after that. At the same time, Provo City welcomes innovative and unique designs. And that, and maybe it's not about, maybe it's not so much about maintaining integrity as much as it is, you know, resonating with or engaging in aesthetic dialogue with existing designs, or something like that. So it, so it doesn't feel like the harmony is, continuity is kind of the heavy-handed, as heavy-handed as it might feel in the current iteration. So that's, that's kind of my big, my big suggestion. And then the other thing that I would say is, I really like this idea of public art. Provo City welcomes artistic expression, encourages public art to be incorporated into projects and public way designs. And this is more of a question than it is about a suggestion of the language. But are, what are we, what are we doing right now, if anything, to promote or to enable public art? I mean, is, is the city, has it dedicated money to public art? Would this be part of the RAP tax that just got approved potentially? Or, you know, what is it that we might do beyond just say, we welcome artistic expression? And where does it go from there? Is it, is it worth specifying something more extensive here? Or are there things off, off that I don't know about that are promoting public art?
Yeah, well, one thing to consider is that this is, this document is not necessarily meant to be a long-range vision document that's directing changes to capital improvement budgets or anything like that. It's more identifying specifically just the standards that exist or the standards that we want to see as development occurs. But to answer the other part of your question there, the city is working actually in a couple of different ways of trying to help encourage public art. For example, there is, right now, there's basically an effort between BYU art students and the city is welcoming them being able to display some of their work as they put that together. And the city's working with them to basically to give them places along Seminole Street where they can...
Okay, I've kind of revered it.
But I, you know, I just use that as an example of one of the ways that we can use to do that. But I don't know...
That's not this document's job.
...necessarily trying to achieve.
Okay, just saying, we welcome it. It's about as much as it can do.
Right, you know, some, in some places, as, as you look at regulation and things like that, if you don't see something stated, you almost assume that it's not allowed. So that was the purpose of putting that in, was that if somebody really wanted to incorporate something, if it's with an individual development, or if, even if it's somebody who's just wanting to display their own artwork or something like that, and work there, we wanted to basically be able to make an actual statement that said, hey, things goes in...
This is okay, yeah.
Let's, let's start incorporating those into our...
And then just one more thing along that same line is that I know that oftentimes public art takes the, takes the form of working creatively with amenities. And I just didn't know if the amenity selections at the back of the design standards might potentially interfere with the possibility of people creating innovative, innovative benches or, not innovative, but design, you know, unique artistic benches or other things. Do we want to stay away from creative amenities? Or would it be, would it be maybe wise to say somewhere that we're even open to innovative and creative bus stops? Or, you know, I don't know that that's under this purview, but, or benches or things like that? Or do you feel like the city has, actually, no, we prefer that the benches all be the same?
Well, primarily what this document does is it does establish baseline minimum and, and something for an expectation, right? Part of that innovative design statement that's at the beginning is to serve that purpose. And maybe that's something that's more come to you as the planning commission don't feel like it's clarified enough. But if somebody wants to come in and say, listen, I know that this is your standard street bench that you use, but as part of our design and part of what we're working on, we really want to do this. The door is open there for those discussions to happen. And then it would basically be a planning commission decision. To deviate.
Okay, yeah, maybe it's even just, when I read innovative, the innovative design section, I was just thinking strictly architectural innovative design. So maybe it's just worth adding, you know, we welcome innovative and unique designs to buildings, amenities, or, you know, just being a little bit more specific potentially. I don't know, but maybe you get into too much trouble by...
Right, well, so this, this is not an architectural design standard too. This is just a streetscape design standard. So it's basically building facade into the public realm.
That's a good reminder.
So we try to be careful about not making any comments or statements about architectural regulation or design standards. Those are part of what's actually already covered in our DT one, DT two, and ITOD zoning regulations.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rowan, and thank you, Austin. Mr. Bandley had a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thought and one question. I appreciate the document, and I appreciate I was drawn to the attention to detail about the trees and the planters and those sorts of things. And I, I like that. I think there's a lot of variation that can, that can occur. I, I was also drawn to item F in the, in the city prepared document about adverse impacts on adjacent landowners. I just, has there been representation from the business community? Is the business community, the chamber, are people generally in favor of this sort of thing? Or they, they had representation as this is being crafted, as it sits before us? I'm just curious about their input and how they feel about this in a general sense.
Yeah, so we did, we did reach out to Downtown Inc., who would be involved with a lot of this, and spoke with them specifically about this to make sure that this wasn't anything that they were overly worried about or anything like that. They, they actually showed positive feedback as well in that regard. This document too was, it's, it's more contrived of a unified effort between multiple city departments too. So Parks and Recreation was involved, our Public Works Department was involved, our Energy Department was all involved in the creation of this. So most of the stakeholders that you would see being affected by this were involved through the creation of the document and had plenty of input along the way.
Yeah, I was just, you know, curious if any of them saw it as limiting or obstructionary to the front door of their business, or if they had any concerns.
Not that we've received any feedback from, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bandley. Mr. McKinney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question for you, and that would be related to the amenities section. Oftentimes, we, in more downtown areas, we see some features that are typically in that zone, like water features or statues, bronze statues, fire pits and those kinds of things. We haven't expressly drawn those out as part of the amenities list. And so if somebody wanted to put a feature in the frontage of their property, who reviews that and approves something like that? And how do we maintain consistency in that, in those features?
So they would, if somebody wanted to put something like a fire pit, per se, in the amenity zone, they would basically just bring that in with their development proposal. And that would go through the planning commission. The only thing in the amenities section that's specified is when we have an exact amenity that we want to see for that unifying element that runs throughout everything. But yes, the idea is that that zone is identified. There's, there's an, an idea of what goes in that zone, but it's open as to whatever that space evolves to contextually with the development.
And just to follow up with that, and that would be, so would that be something the design review committee would then take a look at? And because I'm thinking if there were two different planners working simultaneously on different projects, then neither one of them would be looking at it from the same view, you know, vantage point of looking at consistency amongst those features. And so would they be reviewed by the same team for preliminary approval?
Yeah, we, just as, for information, I guess, as staff, we generally bring all of those things up amongst each other anyway.
Okay.
But if this was something that we felt was necessary to go through the design review committee prior to coming to the planning commission, obviously, if it's anything that deviates from these standards, it's going to come to some other board or commission anyway to, to be able to give basically that stamp of approval of being an innovative design or, or something that doesn't negate the purpose of the design standards. So if, if you felt like the design review committee was the place for that to be heard, we can certainly address that too, as opposed to the planning commission.
Thank you. Other questions from members of the commission for staff? Seeing none, are there any neighborhood chairs or members of the community that would like to speak or to be heard on this issue? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion for this item and return the discussion to members of the planning commission. And if there are no more discussion items for this, I would look for a motion and a second on this item.
Make a motion.
Mr. Rowan, please.
A move that we forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council to adopt the proposed downtown streetscape standards and for the community developments request of those standards. And include in that recommendation... And include in that recommendation the staff report and the comments that we've made tonight.
Thank you.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Bandley. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor forwarding a positive recommendation on this item, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, indicate. Passes unanimously with the positive recommendation towards the municipal council. Item number two, the Provo City Attorney's Office requests an amendment to Section 14.34.24, residential facilities for persons with a disability and residential facility for elderly persons, including the elimination of a minimum separation requirement and adding certain site standards and occupancy requirements. And Mr. Maxfield, or Counselor Williams, from the city's attorney's office will present this for us.
Thank you. One of my assignments is to work with regulations dealing with persons with disabilities. As you may know, that in early 2014, Provo City amended its ordinance dealing with assisted living centers so that they essentially could be in any area of the city where other people could, where residential uses exist, as opposed to limiting them to certain areas of the city. Needless to say, assisted living facilities have a clientele of persons with disabilities, and so it was important for us to make that change. However, at that time, we did not, so far as I know, look at other areas of our zoning code and development code that would pertain to persons with a disability, and that's why we recommended that the planning commission consider that. Actually, we did the presentation for the municipal council, and they've asked that the planning commission consider that, because when you look at residential facilities for persons with disabilities or for elderly persons, to some degree, there's an overlap. And so sometimes one could use the term elderly almost as a placeholder for persons with a disability. And that's one area where case law is beginning to grow, where regulations are being enforced against counties or cities who may essentially have regulations that have a disparate impact upon persons with a disability, even though the terminology used in their ordinances may not say disability, it may say elderly. Or as in the case of our elderly, definition of an elderly person is defined as a person with the capacity to live independently, so the converse of a person with disability. So if we could move to the next slide, the background was basically that the assisted living facilities are just regulated by federal law and then by licensing. These are the issues to look at, is that minimum distance requirements are disfavored, highly disfavored. And we have distance requirements in both the residential facilities for the elderly and the residential facilities for persons with a disability. The state has stricken its definition of elderly person, that was in 10-9A-516, and has basically stricken residential facilities for the elderly from the code. I don't know whether the planning commission wishes to do that, whether they find value in allowing residential facilities for the elderly and simply striking that portion of the definition of elderly person that would appear to target persons with a disability by striking the definition that they can live independently. If we could have slide four, yeah. That illustrates one of the distance requirements for the persons with a disability. Five to seven years ago, it's very common, and it's still actually very common, to find cities and counties and states that still have distance requirements. They are slowly being rolled back via the case law with the feeling that, just as you would not say that persons with brown eyes couldn't live within a certain distance of someone else with brown eyes, neither is there a rationale for saying that a person with a disability could not live within 1,000 feet or 1,320 feet of another residence where there's a person with a disability. So those are highly disfavored. As a matter of fact, and I think it's on the next slide, United States Department of Justice, in, I think it was 2008, had a pretty strong statement about distance requirements. And there is also case law where they essentially agree that density restrictions are generally inconsistent with the Fair Housing Act as it is applied to persons with a disability. So in the next slide, then, focusing on the residential facilities for elderly persons, the lettering in the red shows you that basically that would be the requirement we would recommend be stricken if you decide to keep residential facilities for persons with the elderly. That would make it consistent with federal and with state law. Alternatively, if in your vision of the city, you don't see the purpose for residential facilities for the elderly, then you could make the recommendation that that entire section be stricken, as it has been stricken in state law. And then the other recommendations on the next slide would be definitely to strike the density restrictions in the facilities for persons with a disability.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Williams from members of the commission? Mr. Bandley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things have been running around in my head here. My father, for the last couple of years of his life, lived in an assisted living facility here in the valley, and I'm just wondering how this might have changed his experience. This statement here, capable of living independently, you know, it's kind of interesting, because he lived there, he had certain needs, you know, like for medication, management, and some other things, but he essentially did live independently. So I just, I know that the facility where he was, one of the criteria was that he had to quote-unquote be able to live independently. Some of the people had automobiles, for example, that lived in that facility. How would that apply to this facility's ability to accept or reject someone's application to live in that particular kind of facility? Would it have any impact whatsoever, or?
As I understand the code, and Brian could correct me if I am wrong about this, we're talking about a couple of different things, that assisted living facilities may range from serving clients who have needs for assistance with the activities of daily living, and may move up to more care on-site, depending on what their licensure allows, maybe memory care units, for example. The elderly residential facility is a different categorization. So it's, my understanding is it is not licensed by the state. It's basically allowing a congregate living situation for persons over the age of 60. And the supposition was that no licensure would be needed because those persons living there would not need medical care or perhaps assistance beyond some kind of minimal assistance with activities of daily living. So it essentially allows a higher occupancy, meeting those other requirements, might facilitate aging in place, or facilitate living arrangements for persons on limited income.
Okay. Just another question, explain the distance requirement again. That just seemed, I don't know, seems kind of discriminatory, or just, I don't know the rationale behind that. How did that come?
How it came about?
Yeah.
I believe that there was a feeling at one time that perhaps some areas of a city or a county might become ghettoized, if, that you might have many facilities clustered together, and there would not be the diversity in a neighborhood that a city or a county might feel was desirable. And so the distance requirements were there to prevent the clustering.
And what you're asserting, or what these recommendations are asserting, is that that be done away with based on case law or current trending?
That is correct, that essentially, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's okay.
The case law and the Department of Justice feels as though the impact on persons with a disability is that it restricts unduly where those persons can reside in the community, and that there's not a good rationale for telling persons with a disability, you can't live within a certain distance of another group of persons with a disability.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense to me now. It seems like if you look at people with disabilities or aging, they are a subset of the population and ought to be allowed to live according to whatever that ratio is within a group of the population. I just, that rationale previously just kind of doesn't resonate with me. This sounds better.
It may have been a case of unfounded stereotyping of what it means to be a person with a disability, and I think that there's been a good deal of education and a good deal of rethinking about making sure that persons with a disability have every opportunity afforded to them, including in housing.
Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. McKinney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in your review of the proposed amendments to Section 14 that have been identified in our staff report, is that a comprehensive change that is in conformity with the suggestions that you have presented? And in other words, as it's been stated, has it been reviewed so that we've met all that criteria?
Let me be sure I understand your question. So the redline version of the?
Correct.
The code? It should meet the criteria for both the state and the federal.
Okay. I just saw, my question is, you've reviewed it with staff, and it has met all the criteria for what has been presented to us in terms of meeting the qualifications that you're suggesting for both the city and the state?
I would propose that that would be compliant with both the state and the state.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Ron. I had one question for you, Ms. Williams. It says in section, oh, let me sort section for you, 1434.230, number three, bullet point B, if we can follow that, it says that no residential facility for the elderly persons be established in 1,000, within 1,000 feet of another existing residential facility for elderly persons. So this is elderly person adjacent to another elderly person, rather than elderly person adjacent to a disability. Is there a rationale for why we don't want a residential facility for elderly within 1,000 feet of another residential facility for elderly people within 1,000 feet of each other, rather than elderly for disability? Does that make sense? Why do we want to leave that?
As long as you're not restricting it to persons with a disability, because they are protected under federal law, under federal statute, elderly persons without the notion of disability do not receive that level of protection.
Protection, okay.
So that if the city wanted to say, we're happy with giving this increased density, you can have eight unrelated elderly persons living where ordinarily you could only have three persons unrelated living.
Oh, okay.
Then it would be a way of controlling density among a non-disabled population.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Or, I'm sorry, let me correct that, we would not have disability in that.
Right. Other questions for Ms. Williams from the planning commission? Are there members of the community or neighborhood chairs that would wish to speak or to address us on this issue? So please come forward, state your name and your issue. Seeing none, we will close this portion for public comment on this item and return the discussion to planning commission. And if there's no other questions or comments from the members of the planning commission, I look for a motion and a second on this item, if possible.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Please, Mr. McKinney.
For item number two, where the Provo City's Attorney's Office has requested an amendment to Section 14.34.24, residential facilities for persons with a disability and residential facility for elderly persons, that I would recommend that we would forward with a positive recommendation of approval to the municipal council, would include in my motion both the staff report and the statements made by council with respect to that it has been reviewed to be in compliance with the state requirements for the elimination of the minimum distances, as well as the, make sure I get my terminology correct here, and removing the terminology for the disabled persons so that we're not inconsistent with the Fair Housing Act.
Thank you.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Ronan. Any discussion on the motion before us? Seeing none, those in favor forwarding a positive recommendation, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is positive unanimously in terms of what we will forward to the municipal council. Item number three, evidently the main event. Andrew Coutts requests a zone map amendment for approximately .93 acres from the RA to R110 zone to facilitate the creation of a two-lot subdivision on property located approximately 1650 east, 1400 south, in the Provost South neighborhood. And Mr. Yost from the city staff will present this item to us. Josh.
Thank you. The subject property of this item, if we can move to the next slide, is a large lot, as you can see, resulting from a previous subdivision that was left large in this manner due to building restrictions due to seismic fault hazards. If you move to the next slide, you can see the hatched area to the northwest or the top half of the property. That is the area that is impacted by the building restrictions, leaving the buildable area on the back of each of those lots. So this lot was left large in the previous subdivision, and the zone was not changed for that lot from the agricultural zone, or the residential agricultural zone. Prior to this meeting, a variance for lot width, essentially a five-foot variance, has been granted by the Board of Adjustment, and a plat has been approved by administrative hearing subject to the approval of, I contingent on the approval of, this zone map amendment. The applicants are requesting the same zone as the properties immediately surrounding it, and the zone will allow the subdivision of the property and construction of two homes that are consistent in size and lot size with the surrounding neighborhood. No neighborhood concerns were noted. A neighborhood meeting was held, and the neighborhood expressed positive reception to the proposal, and we're happy to have the lots finally developed. They're currently just open, weeded lots right now, very thorny, weeded lots, as we've tried to put signs in them. So the neighborhood has provided a positive recommendation to move forward on each of the actions related to this development. So staff has reviewed it against the applicable general plan policies and the findings of fact relative to our standards for consideration of zoning map amendments, and found that the applications compliant in each regard there, and would recommend to the commission that they forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council for this zone map amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Yost. Member, or questions for staff from members of the commission?
I don't have any.
Member, or questions for staff from members of the commission? Seeing none, we would invite the applicant to come forward, if he is present, or someone representing the applicant, to address us. Please state your name and your phone number for the record, sir.
Great. My name is Andrew Coats. My phone number is 801-404-9587.
Thank you, sir.
I don't have anything to add to the staff report besides the fact that the community meeting went very well. I asked them specifically whether they would want one big residential agricultural lot there, or if they'd prefer to have two single-family lots that would be congruent with their same zoning of theirs, and those that were vocal in the meeting expressed that they were positive about two, two homes.
Thank you, Mr. Coats. Any questions for the applicant before he returns to a seat from members of the commission? Thank you, Mr. Coats. Are there neighborhood chairs or members of the community that would like to address us on this issue? Not seeing a large rush at all. We will close the public comments on this issue and return the discussion to members of the planning commission for this item. There are no comments from the commission, I will look for a recommendation, or a motion, I should say.
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion. I move that we forward to the Provo City Municipal Council a positive recommendation concerning item three. Andrew Coats requests a zone map amendment for approximately .93 acres from the RA to the R110 zone to facilitate the creation of a two-lot subdivision on property located approximately 1650 east, 1400 south in Provo, and would include in the, the motion, the staff report, the summary of key issues, and the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Vanley. I'll look for a second.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. McKinney. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor forwarding a positive recommendation to the municipal council, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion is unanimous, we will forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council. This concludes the agenda items on our planning commission.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Those in favor of adjourning, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, we are adjourned. We thank you very much for your attendance and participation today. Have a wonderful, wonderful evening, and thank you.